Here.
All right, thank you very much. Dr. Anderson is out of town this evening and out of the state caring for his father. We keep the Anderson family in our thoughts this evening. Good evening and welcome, everyone. It's great to see you. I would also like to begin this evening with some gratitude and celebration of Indigenous Peoples' Day. In doing so, we would like to join with the Department of Education and respectfully acknowledge that the land now known as Minnesota is the ancestral homelands of the Dakota and the Anishinaabe people, and we pay our respects to these stewards, both past and present. And what a glorious fall day it was. So, thanks, everyone. And now for the first item on our agenda, we will approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. The consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the packet, and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Sir, motion to that effect?
So moved.
A second. All right, it's been seconded. There's no discussion for the consent agenda items, and I think it's a roll call vote.
Lynda Cohen.
Yes.
Jay Hesby.
Yes.
Heidi Kater.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Sherri Poseen.
Yes.
Elin Sohoney.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
All right, thanks so much. We have an agenda. And one more thing before we move to the items on the agenda, I want to welcome Amy, who's helping us out this evening, and make a quick reminder that if you are planning to address the school board this evening, which tonight will follow the Student Spotlight presentation, be sure to complete a written form that's at the back of the table and hand it over to Amy before that time comes. All right, and now I'll join Dr. Flansberg at the podium for the recognitions. Oh, wrong. That is so wrong. Excuse me. The first item on our agenda is reports from organizations. And Tonvi, why don't you come on up and tell us about what's happening at the high school? We had so much fun at the homecoming carnival, so we can't wait to hear what's going on now.
Okay. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Tonvi. I serve as our student body vice president at the high school. I'm a senior, and I would just like to say thank you so much for coming to the block party. I know the weather was not ideal, so we really appreciate that you guys came, even though it was rainy and cold. So, homecoming was a great success. We had a lot of, like, positive messages from the community and our schools, so that was great. As of school, term one midterms are this week, so that's happening. Parent-teacher conferences are in full swing, and then also, we had the tackle cancer flag football game last Saturday and the tackle cancer football game last Friday, and we raised almost $4,000 for the Randy Shaver Foundation, so that was a good thing. Fall sports are starting postseason play, so many fall sports are moving to sections, and winter sports tryouts are coming up in a couple weeks. And as for student council, we are working on Adopt a Family, which is where we raise money for IOCP during November and December, so that's what we're working on. And then also, NHS is hosting a blood drive this Friday. That's about it.
All right, thank you so much. Board colleagues, any comments or questions?
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
For the blood drive, do you know what the times are? Do people just show up? How does it work?
Um, well, I think it's during lunches, and mostly it's just students that do it. I'm not sure if other people are allowed, but yeah. I do know that the high school is one of the biggest, like, donators to our local blood drives, just because we have so many people, but yeah.
We can probably follow up to board colleagues and see if there's a way for adults to come. So, we'll let you know. Great. Anything else?
Well, thank you for letting us come to the block party. We had a great time as well.
I'm glad.
Really, really good time.
I think, actually, the rain held off during the block party.
Yeah.
And then, once the... So, student council, great job with the planning of the weather.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the football team, not so much.
It did start raining as soon as the football game started, so...
Yeah, I think so. Well, you have midterms, so good luck to you on midterms and things, and thanks too to our teachers and parents who are donating food and our teachers who are attending conferences. That's a big lift, so... All right, thank you. We'll see you next month. Okay, and now, I can tell I was excited about recognitions. I'll join Dr. Flansberg at the podium.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm excited to welcome Carrie Freeman up front to join us for just a moment. Carrie is the... Carrie is the Office Paraprofessional at Meadow Ridge Elementary, and we are pleased to nominate Carrie Freeman, Office Paraprofessional, as the October Wayzetta Employee of the Month. When Meadow Ridge opened in 2016, Carrie was an active parent, serving on the PTO and a dedicated volunteer. In 2017, she was hired as the Front Office Paraprofessional and has been an integral part of our community ever since. As a former science teacher, Carrie understands what school life is like from an insider's perspective. She knows that when teachers are happy, students are happy. She is the first person whom visitors interact, and she ensures that it is always positive. Visitors are put at ease as she assists with them with the sign-in system and directions as to where they are going. It was during the 2020 shutdown when Carrie earned the title "Copier Queen." To keep everyone safe, she became the only person who could touch the copier, and that continues to this day. Wouldn't you know it, her positivity rubbed off on the copier as well, as it rarely goes down any longer. When it was time to take the copier to be replaced last year, Carrie made sure it got the proper goodbye, complete with balloons and a cake. It's the little extras she dreams up that affect the culture in such a positive way. Nominators had this to say about her: She goes above and beyond to support teachers and complete her work. She always has a positive attitude and treats others with respect. Carrie is incredibly hardworking, efficient, and does everything with a smile. She is such an asset to our community. She does so much for all the teachers to make sure our classrooms can run smoothly, and she is always quick with everything in the office and so willing to help. In addition, she manages attendance, lunch count, mail, laminating phone calls, students coming to the office, and always seems to know when we need a little fun, which often includes cake. We are grateful for all Carrie does and how her positivity influences the office and the entire building. You are Meadow Ridge. Congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you to the board for recognizing me tonight, and just thank you to everybody from Meadow Ridge, especially Karen, who has... I mean, the building is so positive and fun to work at, it makes it really easy to do my job, so thank you very much.
Madam Chair and members of the board, tonight, we would also like to recognize the following employees who announced their retirement in 2022, 2023, and thank them for their years of service to Wayzetta Public Schools and wish them well in their future endeavors. Jeanne Fow, Administrative Professional at the high school with 26 years of service, and Lori Peterson, Administrative Professional, teaching and learning with 25 years of experience. I don't know if either of them are in attendance tonight, but we congratulate them both and wish them well in their future endeavors.
And that concludes our recognitions. So, the next fun thing for this evening is the return for the 2223 school year of our School Spotlight Presentations, and so, we're so excited that Meadow Ridge is the first school that's going to be kicking us off. I'll turn it over first to Dr. Flansberg, who will then introduce Dana Miller, and then we'll get started.
Madam Chair and members of the board, I'm happy to introduce Dana Miller, our Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, to the podium as we start up our School Spotlight Presentations again with a few members of the Meadow Ridge staff. Dana, we'll hand it over to you.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Flansberg, Madam Chair, and members of the board. It is with great excitement tonight that we return to this tradition, and it gets to be my first time doing it, too. So first, I'd like to publicly thank Karen Kefler and the staff at Meadow Ridge. As the newbie, I dropped the ball a little bit of this and gave them the wrong date, and so they quickly shuffled, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, that what a great team players they were, and I think you'll hear more of that tonight. They're here tonight to talk about some work that they've been doing with circle training as part of their supports of student social and emotional learning. As you recall, last year, through the ESAR dollars that were provided in COVID relief, one of the areas of concerns that we had is with, not with just learning loss, but with our students' abilities to adapt and be in school or do school, if you will, and this was an area of focus that we decided to commit some of those ESAR dollars to. And through that, we were able to add two school counselors to our fleet and mix, and with that, we added one at Meadow Ridge, who is here tonight, along with our social worker at Meadow Ridge, and then we were also able to add one at Sunset Hill, and we're hearing really positive impacts that they're able to make on students. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Kefler and her staff and share the excitement that's going on at Meadow Ridge. Thank you.
Dana, Dr. Flansberg, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for allowing us to present here this evening. I thought I would give you just a little bit of background moving into the school year. So far, we are at 769 students, and I say "so far" because we are adding students all the time. With that... Oh, this seems to be the older presentation. We are up to 55 students, 55 new students. With that, we have 12 teachers, 12 brand-new teachers, three new paraprofessionals, two lunch/resist supervisors, and one student support specialist who's not really new. He's just returning to us, Mike Trevick. Super happy that he's here. And Sophie, I wonder if your changes are going to be on here? Did you make a few changes? Are we? Okay, we'll be flexible. Great.
Thank you.
Our focus this year is building our community, and as you can see from the number of new staff members, new students, we talked about rebuilding our community. The last two years have been really difficult in building community, and so, our student experience goal this year is that we have 0% of our students marking "no" on the following items: "In school, I learn how to get along with people who are different from me," and "In school, adults help me feel good about who I am." We found in our examination of data in August that students receiving special education services and our children of color were more apt to put down rarely or never for those answers, and we felt that it's important for everyone to belong, everyone feel happy and proud about who they are, to be as successful as they can be at school. Our collective efficacy plan, which means what are we going to do together to have confidence in each other and make sure that we are doing what's best for students? We want to make sure that the feedback we give children is really explicit, that we know... They know exactly how we are feeling and exactly what they need to do to help them improve in their academics. Asking the right questions to build those relationships. A lot of our teachers, the vast majority of our teachers, engage in some type of morning meeting or morning gathering, a morning circle, and we wanted to make sure that it's not just about, "How was your weekend? What's your favorite sport?" Things like that, questions that really build those relationships within the classroom. The morning circles, which I'll talk about in a moment, that really focuses on relationships and understanding of each other, and looking at social-emotional learning as a Tier One intervention. That is something that all students receive being here at Meadow Ridge. Community circles. Part of the grant that our Solvay Heredia, our Director of Equity Inclusion, wrote, 40 members of the Wayzetta community participated in restorative circle training this summer, and six of those people were from Meadow Ridge. I was there as well. Restorative circles is an Indigenous practice, and on Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's a great day to talk about this, where if someone wrongs the community, it's up to the community to talk about that and heal from that. And before that, there must be community before we can restore the community. This year, we're talking about building that community. Every human need, one of the basic needs that we have, is to belong. If we're in a place where we don't feel like we belong, it's hard, and especially if you think about our youngest learners, this year's third graders, for example, they had just a little over half of a year kindergarten, their first grade really wasn't the same, their second grade really wasn't the same, and we need to help them feel like they belong again. They didn't really have the opportunities in, you know, the clubs and the sports and just playdates. And so, we really recognize that and want to work on that. In writing our goals this year, we decided to adopt our "we're all in" slogan from our equity work. We are all in, and we are all in community at Meadow Ridge. Today, interestingly enough, CCX came out and was able to record a couple of our community circles today, and it was really great to see. So what is this? What's it all about? In our community circles, there are some guidelines that everyone follows to be in this community. So, we talk about honoring each other. We have a talking piece, and I'll show you that, and the person who has the talking piece is the person who does the talking. That gives everyone else the ability just to quiet themselves and listen. No need to respond, just listen and learn. They also talk about honoring confidentiality, that what happens in the circle, it's not something that we really share with other people. This is where we are able to speak our truth and learn about each other and be vulnerable. Then, what the teacher does is a sort of grounding activity. So, one of the activities that we observed in circle this morning is just a breathing exercise, where the students took their hands and they traced, and when they traced up their finger, they inhaled, and when they traced down, they exhaled. And up and inhale, and down and exhale, and it really just kind of quiets everyone's body. And after students are grounded and quiet, then there's a quote that gets them to think about what the question will be in the circle. On the lower right of that picture, there's always a centerpiece, and that centerpiece serves two purposes. The first purpose is they create it together, so it's a group project. They are all represented within this. And Michelle Erhardt, the teacher in this classroom, pointed out that there's a little hole right at the top of the heart, and that's because they're expecting a new student after MEA. So when that student comes, they'll put their hand right in that space, and they will be part of that community. And I just thought, oh, my gosh, so great that you're planning for that. It also gives students a focal point in case they are somewhat uncomfortable, that they don't want to... Whoops, they don't want to look at anyone. It just gives them something to look at. And in that circle today, each child talked about the value that they wrote on their hand. Some wrote safety, some wrote bravery, some wrote love, some wrote trust, some wrote friendship, and just gives them that opportunity to share. The top picture is a talking piece that, as they're answering those questions, they pass the piece to the left, and as you can see on the picture to the lower left, everyone is in that circle. Everyone comes together in that circle. Along with that, social-emotional learning. We... Dana introduced our social worker, Kate Wessel, and our new school counselor, Sophia Damie, and they are going to talk about their cooperation this year so far.
Thank you for inviting us to come and speak today. My name is Kate Wessel, and I'm a school social worker within the district. I think this started my ninth year in the district, my second year at Meadow Ridge. And after coming back to my social work role last year, after being a peer coach for two years, it was a whirlwind, and I am so excited that we were able to obtain some of that grant money and add extra mental health and social-emotional support into our building. The needs in the school after COVID and just all the things that have happened within the community and world, I think, were loud and clear last year. So, what we wanted to do is talk a little bit about how we're utilizing our school counselor position and how that's different from school social work, because when you hear counselor and social worker, it kind of sounds the same. So we want to make sure we're really utilizing that resource appropriately. So, this is just the presentation, the slides we sent out to teachers to help them better understand what does Kate do and what does Sophie do, and we use that MTSS, the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, to better describe that. So Sophie really comes in as that Tier One support that Karen referenced earlier, making sure that our social-emotional learning is really happening at that Tier One. All students are receiving that social-emotional learning in equity. So that might be Sophie going into classrooms, it might be doing some individual work or a small group in different classroom supports. And then, as a social worker, I step in with that Tier Two and Tier Three intervention. So, any of our kids who need a little bit above and beyond to make classroom learning safe and accessible for them and other students. That might look like providing interventions, specialized support to students, again, at that Tier Two or Tier Three students who are receiving specialized education. Could be individual, small group, whole class, but just really building up from that groundwork that Sophie has helped lay.
Yeah, so more specifically, things that I've been doing at the beginning of this school year and into today, so my new student groups actually just concluded last week, because we're already at Week Six. It's crazy that we're already there, but I have 11 new student groups, so there was about 55 students, new students to our school. Oh, can you hear me? Sorry. And so, I had those 11 groups. We really focused on that community-building piece that was super important. We had a bunch of new students coming from out of state, some from out of the country, so it can be a very scary transition, and I wanted to make sure that we were working on that community piece and really focusing on that building community. I do a lot of the social-emotional classroom lessons, so some of those classroom lessons I've done so far are introductory lessons to myself and also just reintroducing Kate in our school and explaining to the students, you know, like, how we're there to support them, where they can find us, the difference between our jobs, although, to students, we've kind of been explaining, you know, we're kind of one in the same. One that I'm starting actually this week is some bullying lessons, because this is Bullying Prevention Month for the month of October, so doing lessons in classrooms first through fifth grade on that, and then I'll be doing Zones of Regulation with all of our kindergartners and first graders, too, to really talk about that language with the different zones and teach them different coping strategies, too, when they're in all of the zones. I also do a lot of morning check-ins with students. School is really starting to settle in, and I think a lot of students are realizing, "I have to be here every day," and so, making that transition as smooth as possible. So I've been working on that, small groups, too. So, as I said, my new student groups just concluded, but I'll be doing friendship groups and whatever the needs are, you know, throughout the year, I'll be creating different groups to meet with those students. One-on-one skills work as well, too. Been building my caseload with students. I have about 10 students I'm meeting with on a weekly basis right now. Support building-wide SEL, so that goes along with our equity team as well, too. So, I'll be working closely with them and making sure that what they're initiating in our school is also what I'm building off of and providing support in that area as well. Student observations, this is something that I did a lot at the beginning of the year, just to really get acclimated with our student body and also collect some street data, too. I was a brand-new person to the school and also into this field, so that was really important to me to get into those classrooms. Crisis support, so I am one of the people that, when we call for support, I'll respond to the calls and help students wherever they're at. Student mediation, too, is something that I've been doing primarily, so part of that conflict resolution with our students, being able to talk out, you know, whatever's going on and figuring out those coping skills for future conflict that might arise. And it didn't get included, but Holly, I'm not going to take credit for it, because this was all Holly, so my colleague, Holly Simmons, she's our school counselor at Sunset Hill. We've been working on kind of a mapping system of what we will do to make sure that we are meeting the mindsets and standards of our ASCA model, and so, we've been planning out... We have a PLC every week, so we've been planning out our lessons and how that will align with our equity team initiatives, and then also just wherever our needs are at. So, that didn't get linked in here, but if anybody's interested, I can send that out. But yeah, she worked really hard on that, so it looks awesome, and it gives us just a really great foundation and roadmap into our year and then years to come.
I have been really grateful for Sophie's position in the school counselor position, because so much of what she does is that stuff that I would leave work and think, "I did not have time to get to that," because in a building of 750, 780, there's a lot of Tier Two and Tier Three needs that happen throughout the day, so, yeah. I just pick back up, like, what I mentioned earlier, doing that social-emotional behavioral intervention supports, crisis calls, Section 504, mental health crisis lead, staff consultation, that's part of my role, and then definitely, there's some things that we overlap on and working together, and that's supporting student success, attendance, student support calls, school-wide initiatives, and more. And then, what we did is we developed a student support referral form, so that way, we're also tracking how many students are asking for... Or how many teachers are asking for support with students, and then we can follow up on kind of who follows up with the student, who's communicating with the family, with the teacher, and what are those needs, so we can kind of see long-term. And it forces us to slow down a little bit and reflect on who are the kids that are knocking on our door. So, yeah. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Fantastic. I would imagine that board colleagues have some questions or comments. Lynda?
Thank you for all that wonderful work, really important. You mentioned, and I think I caught it right, that you developed a plan, the two... That you and the person at Sunset Hill developed a plan, sort of looking forward, or I'd be really interested in having you send that out or let us know more about it.
Yes, absolutely. I will figure out a way to send that, and I for sure will, because, yeah, it's a really great detail that's got all the ASCA mindsets and behavior standards, too, so showing for, I know, grant purposes, collecting that data, that we are meeting those standards, so, yeah. What? Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ASCA is our school counseling framework, so it's essentially at the foundation of what we're doing. So it's got different mindsets and standards of our job role and how we should build our program from that foundation. It's kind of like the foundation of a house I described, and then we build up from there, so...
I think if you get that, whatever slide presentation, to Amy, she can send that out to the board, so...
I will do that.
Thanks for that. Bonita?
Okay, now, it's on. So, just a point of clarity, you mentioned that, I think, in part of, on the slide, the responsibility of what you've been doing, one of them was student observation. What is that, actually?
Yeah, so, being that I was brand-new to the school, I really wanted to make sure that I was collecting that street data on students, on the culture of the school, and a big way to do that is through student observation. So what I was doing the first couple weeks, and I'm still doing it now today, but really just going into classrooms and just taking that time to just listen and learn. I've also been working in a couple classrooms recently, some students that have had big emotions and things like that, and if I'm called for a crisis response, I want them to know that I'm someone that comes in that classroom on a more frequent basis and not just when they're having those big emotions. So that is what I've been doing, like, more recently, now that I'm in Week Six and feeling a lot more comfortable, so that they know, you know, they recognize who I am and that I'm that support system. So that was my method at the beginning, and then also will continue to be my method throughout, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
There are comments. Heidi?
Question. How do you... I think this is all very important, and I do understand the foundational basis for it. How do you see this aligning with student success academically?
That's a really good question. Do you want it? Yeah.
As I talked about at the beginning, I think we need to make...
As I talked about at the beginning, I think we need to make sure that students' basic needs are being met before they can be successful academically. So are they, are they calm? Do they feel like they belong? And even just more basic, are they hungry? Are they, are they feeling comfortable where they're at? And helping students identify their emotions, helping them to, you know, just tell people what they need to tell people or just say how they're feeling, and then working with the class for that belonging piece. Once students are emotionally comfortable and stable, that's when we're open to new learning. Thanks for asking.
Other questions and comments? Okay. I think it's fantastic that when we see these students, the goals, right, and the building goals, to hear, you know, in-school adults help me feel good about who I am. And now we just saw from you the ways that different grown-ups in different ways and capacities then work with their teachers and other people to help them feel that way, whether they're in ready-to-learn or whether they're feeling some feels that they need to, to take care of so that they can be ready to learn. So thank you for that. We look forward to hearing how, how it continues to move forward this year. So, and thanks for, for being our kickoff for our spotlight presentations. It's just so fantastic to have these back. So thanks too to Teaching and Learning for making this happen, so.
Thank you for having us.
All right, take care. Okay. Fantastic. Well, we move from that to, we do not have a superintendent report this evening, and that was a Teaching and Learning report this evening, and so now we'll move to Finance and Business Services, and I'll turn it over to, oh, oh my gosh, you guys, I am so off my game this evening, I'm so sorry. It is now time for the audience opportunity to address the school board. I was not trying to forget you. At this time for the audience opportunity to address the school board, this gives audience members a chance to share their input with the school board. Please know that the school board, that this is a time for us to listen, the school board does not respond or engage in any sort of conversation with the speaker. Please present your comments in a respectful and professional manner. And this evening, each speaker will be invited to the podium to speak for three minutes with a maximum, for three minutes, and Amy will hold up a red card to keep us on track. So Emily, thank you for being patient, come on up to the podium.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you guys this evening. My name is Emily, like Sarah mentioned, and I'm on the leadership team at an organization called Cell Phone Safety. And the reason I'm here this evening is we are on mission to keep our students' cellphones safe. We have all sorts of different organizations that help with fire safety and all the things in our world that we're trying to keep our students safe from. And one thing that we've realized as an organization is we don't have the proper things in place to keep our kids and our students' cellphones safe. And so my organization has created a program that we, I would love to discuss with any of you, and it meets all of the Minnesota State Media Literacy Standards. And, you know, one of the things that we've noticed is student anxiety and depression is at an all-time high. And specifically in the state of Minnesota, suicide is actually the third-leading cause of death in teenagers in Minnesota. We also have been having a lot of parent and citizen meetings within this district, which is why I'm here, I just wanted to speak with you all. So I did want to let you guys know that you may start receiving some emails from parents and concerned citizens within the district, who would be interested in bringing cellphone safety to this school district. Just so you know, it's not a cyber attack or spam, it is valid residents and just people within our community that want to make sure our students are cellphones safe. Specifically, what cellphone safety does is we teach students in a classroom environment. And so we have found that in, within even the Minneapolis area, that we have been able to impact students here locally. And we just was, we were looking at some data last week, and we saw that there are, every single time we do the class with students, we see new results and new things where people, where the students are saying that they are no longer addicted to their cellphones, because I think we all know that even us as adults can be addicted, which definitely impacts learning. And so we also teach students of flags that need to be raised and how to raise them. We go through the program by giving students the tools to be able to minimize or altogether avoid unsafe behaviors in situations overall. This is not just a course, but the development of cellphone-safe community. The community that we are developing is actually deeper relationships because of the shared language and the shared curriculum that not only the students will go through, but the teachers and parents also go through with them, with workshops and post-course activities. Bringing these three together is the best approach we have to help our students become better students and healthier digital citizens.
Thank you, Emily. Will you tell us your organization again?
Absolutely. It's Cell Phone Safety.
Cell Phone Safety.
Yes.
Okay. And someone from the administration of the school board will be following back with you, I think I have your contact information.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Okay. Finding my agenda and checking it twice this evening, I am so sorry. Now, indeed, we do not have a superintendent, and we just completed our Teaching and Learning Report, so DeeDee, it's time for the Finance and Operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Flansburgh. Tonight, I bring forward to you a resolution providing for open enrollment of non-resident agreement for the 2023-24 school year. So you have some documents included with the cover sheet, which I'm going to kind of refer to the, the cover sheet for everyone in the audience as well. So according to Minnesota Statute 124D.03 subdivision 2, the board may by resolution limit the enrollment for non-resident pupils in its schools or programs to a number not less than the lesser of the two following items. 1% of the total enrollment at each grade level in the district, or the number of district residents at that grade level enrolled in a non-resident district. With that, administration recommends the following open enrollment guidelines. Limit open enrollment in grades K through 12 to maintain a minimum of 1% of the class side. This is what we've been doing for a number of years. In accordance with the state law, offer and accept enrollment to kindergarten students with a current enrolled sibling or has a parent who is currently employed by district, by the Wayzata Public Schools. The 23-24 kindergarten students will be placed in an elementary school that has anticipated capacity. Again, the reason it's limited at kindergarten is because we've been doing this for a number of years, grades 1 through 12 already are at that 1% threshold. New this year is the district will accept up to five additional siblings beyond the 1% limit at each grade level of either a current enrolled student and as well children of district staff. The student will be placed at a school with anticipated capacity again. If the required minimum number of open enrolled students is not met with siblings and/or with children of employees, then a lottery will be executed to reach the minimum number to satisfy the 1% of open enrollment. With that, Madam Chair, I turn it over to you.
All right, thank you so much. Board colleagues, the recommended action is to adopt the resolution for open enrollment of non-resident, for the open enrollment non-resident agreement for 2023-2024 school year. Is there a motion to that effect? I so, oh, I'm sorry. I so move and ask that we waive the resolution, the reading of the resolution, excuse me.
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, and now it's time for discussion or questions. Are there any? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Thank you to Kristin Tolleson, who I know has been actively working in our, in our Welcome Center as we navigate all of this, it is quite a task, and we are lucky to have you at the helm, so, thank you, Kristin. And hearing no further discussion, it's a roll call vote because it's a resolution.
Mila Sione.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Jay Hasby.
Yes.
Heidi Kader.
Yes.
Bonita Lucky.
Yes.
Sherri Poseen.
Yes.
Sarah Johansson.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Unanimously, you're welcome. Thank you. And I'm checking my agenda twice, there are no Human Resources reports, we now move on to board, no other board action, and we do have a couple board reports. Heidi, I think we have a board report from you.
Madam Chair, board colleagues, community members, and Wayzata teachers, I wanted to update you on the Wayzata Education Fund's annual Drive for Excellence Golf Event. For those who are unaware, the Wayzata Education Fund is a community-led organization that provides teachers with grants for innovative curricular ideas. I'm fortunate to sit alongside an incredible group of dedicated, resourceful, inspiring community members who run the organization. On Monday, September 19th, the Ed Fund hosted its ninth Drive for Excellence event. It was an absolutely beautiful day, the sun was out to play, we had 84 golfers, and I don't think the number is quite finalized yet, but we, I'm happy to report that we have raised $44,000 in sponsorships. So this is the Ed Fund's largest fundraiser for the year, it was very successful. So I wanted to offer my heartiest congratulations on a successful event, and to the members of the Wayzata Education Fund. It's really no minor feat that this event gets put on, it's a lot of effort and a lot of time. So to those members, please know that your time and efforts are greatly appreciated and it does not go unnoticed. To the sponsors of the event, thank you for making it possible. Your support means that we can move our learning environments from excellent to exceptional. To use our Ed Fund Secretary's term, to our beloved teachers, which this is the reason we do all of this, a reminder that all this effort and the resulting resources are here for our fantastic teachers. The Ed Fund is currently accepting grant applications. For projects to take place in the 23-24 school year, applications must be received by December 31st, 2022, and if you're looking for more information, please go to wayzataedfund.org.
Thank you. Any other board reports this evening? I will have one more thing to share, just a reminder for our listening public, that we do have one seat open on the Wayzata School Board for this year. It's a one-year seat to fill out the remainder of the term that was filled through an appointment last fall. You can visit the Wayzata Public Schools website, that's www.wayzataschools.org, go to District, and then School Board, and then Election 2022, or the Secretary of State website to learn more about the candidates that have their websites and things posted. Your polling places will be where you are voting for the general election, which you can also find at the MinnesotaSecretaryOfStatePollFinder.org. So just a reminder that that is happening this year. And this, I check it twice.
May I make a quick announcement on, make a pitch for the Young Scientists Roundtable program?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Young Scientists Roundtable, which has been in existence since, I think, '92, is a program for the, for the Wayzata school community, and it has expanded to other school districts as well. But they had taken a pause for two years during COVID, started again last April, they had Dr. Alan Hunt come and talk about knee replacement, and now we have the next one coming up on Wednesday, and it's on smart bandages which actually provide healthcare alerts through the use of semiconductor chip technology. And the presenter will be Dr. Sarah Swisher, who's a professor of electrical engineering at the U. So please, please, please come to Central Middle School at 7 o'clock on Wednesday evening, Wednesday the 12th of October. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. That is, that sounds really fascinating. Central Middle School, Young Scientists Roundtable is a great spot, so thank you for sharing that information. Okay, one more time, any more board reports? And this does conclude our agenda, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I shall move.
Second. All right, all in favor of adjourning this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All right.